Planning Board is now in session. Good late afternoon to everyone. Eight days ago, the Planning Board closed the public hearing for a proposed project at Two East Main Street. And following the closing of the public hearing, votes were taken for site plan and for special permit for the Village Business District. There were some statements made, especially by myself, that were inaccurate relative to special permit for site plan. As a result of that, and others, other statements, we huddled with Town Council. And as a result of that, he was good enough to give us a letter helping to clarify what transpired on eight days ago, and also moving forward. So the agenda item tonight is clarification on notices of decision for major site plan approval and special permit for Village Business District. So I'll read Town Council's letter to the Planning Board regarding Two East Main Street, effective Planning Board decisions, petition for Village Business District special permit, and major site plan approval. Dear Mr. Chairman and Board Members, pursuant to my discussions with the town planner, and in an effort to clarify the result of the Planning Board's vote on the above referenced petitions, in our opinion, please note the following. The applications, and I'm saying this now, in my discussion with Town Council, his, he emphasized the applications. The applications that were made to permit this site included a special permit for a project within the Village Business District in the Main Street area, together with a request for major site plan approval based upon plans furnished. Historically, this has been the normal procedure in petitions of this nature. During the course of deliberations, a point was raised by certain Board members that, based on their interpretation, a second special permit was needed, given the language contained in Section 174-10.1 of the zoning bylaw. That section indicates that within the Village Business District, major site plan approval shall be by special permit, subject to the procedural requirements of Section 174-9, special permit requirements, and Section 174-10, site plan approval, in compliance with provisions contained in Section 174-10.1, A through C. This is interpreted to be a multi-step process for an applicant to obtain the principal special permit under the Village Business District requirements. That is, Section 174-10.1, together with meeting the decision criteria of Chapter 174-9 for special permits, and the Section 174-10, site plan approval criteria for major site plan review before such special permit will issue. I am informed that a vote was taken relative to the special permit, which requires a supermajority vote of four of the five members, and the vote was actually three in favor, two opposed, which results in no special permit being granted. I am also informed that the vote for the major site plan review application, being treated as a second special permit, was also three in favor and two opposed. However, a site plan approval requires only a simple majority, not a supermajority. So we respectfully submit, in our opinion, that the effect of that vote on the actual application before the Board was a three-two vote to approve the site plan submitted. Notwithstanding such opinion, this project cannot proceed without a special permit grant for a use in the Village Business District, which currently has been denied. Thank you for your attention in this regard. Respectfully submitted, Aldo Supriano, Town Council. So I'll open it up to the Board, if there's any questions or comments, and then we'll open it up to the public. Anyone on the Board? Mr. Mills?
Karina, thanks for making that clarification. I think it's good to set the record straight, and thanks for reading that into the record. No questions.
Mrs. Luttrell?
I still need clarification. I wasn't part of talking to Town Council, so I don't know what questions were asked and what answer he was giving. But this still doesn't explain to me how the bylaw states within a Village Business District, major site plan approval shall be by special permit, meaning it's mandatory that major site plan approval is by special permit. And in his explanation, he said the, the section is subject to procedural requirements of 174-9, but the bylaw actually says procedural and decision criteria of 174-9. And if you go to 174-9, it refers you to Mass. General Laws, and Mass. General Laws require a supermajority. And my other question is, the, the motion in the vote was for a special permit for a major site plan. And if we just go ahead and after the fact approve the site plan, aren't we approving what was voted? Aren't we approving a special permit? Because that was the motion in the vote. I just, in my opinion, we should just leave it as is. The remedy, if there's a mistake made, is, is an appeal. And changing the outcome of a meeting after the hearing is closed, I think is problematic.
You're absolutely right. There, there's absolutely no intention from Town Council, from me or anyone else that I've heard about, to even suggest that we undo what was done. The public hearing is closed, the votes were taken, and the notices of decision are ready for my signature after I read them. They've been reviewed by Town Council. Once I sign them, they get submitted to the town clerk, and that starts the 20-day appeal period. You're, you're absolutely right relative to what was done is done, we're not going back. There, there isn't, there will be a 20-day appeal period. If nothing happens, fine. If something happens in that timeframe, it's taken on its own merits.
But the outcome of that vote has been changed. It was announced at the, the hearing that they failed. And if, if the, the site plan is approved and the vote and the motion was for a special permit, how is that not approving the special permit?
You, you have good questions. It's, and that's one of the reasons we're having this meeting tonight. It's not, this is not a hearing, it's a meeting, and in efforts to get clarification. So I'm sure, after we close this meeting, that these disagreements regarding the interpretation can be looked into further, and maybe efforts taken to do a better job within the code to, you know, have it not subject to interpretation. So, again, this meeting has, has, is not in any way involving the merits of the project. That's behind us. This is more of a clarification of the procedure that we went through. Is there anything else, Mrs. Luttrell?
So what's the result of this meeting?
We, we will, the results of this meeting hopefully will, will be that the people will understand the difference between how we managed the votes eight days ago and the, the way that perhaps they should have been managed. But the outcome is the same, in my opinion, and in, in the Town Council's opinion. And as you said earlier, let it lie, leave it alone, let, let, let the notices of decision, go to the town clerk, and see, see what happens during the appeal period, and that's it.
So, I may have been misunderstood. What I meant to let lie was to leave the decisions and the outcome as it was at the end of the, the public hearing, and not change the outcome to then approve the site plan.
That's not consistent with advice from Council. We don't have to agree with Council, if all five of us...
Right. I disagree with Council. Well, I don't know what the question asked was, so I don't know what this is the answer to.
Well, the basic question was, does site plan in the Village Business District require a special, special permit? And the answer from Council is no.
So how do you get by, major site plan in the Village Business District must be by special permit? Or shall be by special permit?
We can pass that along to Town Council. I'm not in any way going to try to answer that. Nor should I. I read it one way that eight days ago, I've reread it, and I'm in agreement with Town Council. Is there anything else?
I would just be opposed to changing the outcome of the public hearing, which approving the site plan would do.
I did go over that briefly with Town Council. If all, if the maj, if a majority of the Planning Board disagrees with his opinion, then the decision document, the notices of decision, will, will be changed to reflect special permit, if we, if that's what we want to do. But if there's not a majority of the Board that wants to do that, then they will, they will be signed and submitted to Town Clerk, consistent with Town Council's advice.
I think they should be consistent with the vote we took, and the motion was for special permit for major site plan.
Thank you. Mrs. Holian?
Thank you. I'm confused. I think that what Ms. Luttrell has brought up is, I think it requires clarification around the way that the, the code is written. I also, we also received, Karina produced several examples of prior business Village District approvals, which were done under the decision of special permit application for the Village Business District and the decision of major site plan approval. So knowing that our precedent has been established in those two mechanisms, I think the reason I'm confused is because when you do read this, the clarity in the, the code, it specifically states that as, shall be, Village Business Major Site Plan Approval shall be done under the auspices of a special permit. So I would say that I'm confused, given the fact that we have precedent that supports what you, what Council has supported, but I also understand the arguments that, that Ms. Luttrell has raised. So I'm, I'm not at a point where I could actually make a well-educated, informed decision, knowing that there's quite a bit of information on both sides of the, of the docket here.
Thank you. To boil it down to, again, my discussion with, with the letter here from Town Council and my discussion with him today, the Board is required to vote on the contents on the application. And for site plan, for site plan approval, the application does not use the word "special permit." For the Village Business District, it does use the term "special permit." So Town Council advises that if it's, if the application is not for a special permit, which site plan is not, therefore, it does not require the supermajority, it's a simple You have to look at the application. That's, that's the thing upon which the Board votes. Open it up to the public. Any questions, comments?
Steve Morrow, Two Main Street, Southborough. I am as confused, I guess, as everybody else here is in the room. The special permit is for the Village District, so if that special permit is happening in the Village District, I think you need the majority, major majority vote.
It is a special permit. There's one special permit, not two. That's, that's what Town Council's advising. One special permit and site plan approval. Without both, the project does not proceed. Anything else? Any other questions? Comments?
Mary Cork, Eleven East Main Street. So the original application, as I understand it from the meetings, was not what's been going on in the other meetings, when we've been asking for more specifics. Originally, the original application was for retail with apartments.
We can't, no, we can't get into the project, the merits of the project. That's behind us. This is procedural. There's an application form on the town website from the plant, in the Planning Department. If you look at that application form for site plan under 174-10, it does not have the words "special permit."
Okay. I guess. I think we're all so confused, we don't really know.
This, again, this has, this discussion today cannot involve the merits of the project. It's procedural relative to the code. Good evening, Peter Bemis.
Peter. I see the meeting is posted the 27th with the Clerk's office, so, several days ago. And I just found out about this meeting at one o'clock today. So at a serious disadvantage, I see folks in the audience, much better prepared than me, and I'm just expressing my disappointment that I'm just way behind the eight ball here, as usual. But I know you're only talking about the procedural aspect of this, and my expectation was that I submitted a site plan under administrative review, and I submitted a special permit for Village Business District. The vote was a three in favor for the administrative review, so I will take that as an affirmative vote and a positive vote, and expect that to be what's recorded. And then I will take the denial for the Village Business District, which is a disappointing one. I still have an office use that I would like I still have an office use that I would like to go forward with. I still have a company that has two...
We cannot get into the...
I know, but I'm still telling you I have a company that wants to be here.
We can't get into the project. This is about procedure.
The procedure is that I, I'm going to just express myself, that I would like to try to go forward with this project, and I am grateful for the decision that the Board made the other night in favor of the site plan. Thank you.
Karen Sokol, 16 Newton Street. I only got my message in the mail yesterday myself, even though it says that, it just came in my mailbox yesterday. But anyway, regarding the site plan, since I don't have the plans in front of me, and I haven't been following that this long, this, that long. So the site plan, is that like the surveyor's plan? Like when they come and they do the surveying, and they show the boundaries of where the buildings will be and so forth like that? Is that what the site plan is?
Site, the site plan is that, but it, the Board reviews site plans for safety, egress, the stormwater management, traffic flow management, pedestrian management, setbacks. We don't get lighting, we don't get involved in the interior of the building. We make sure that the use is proper for the zone. But site plan basically is the outside of the building and the grounds, parking, all that stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
And as far as the, the notice, we're kind of in the, caught a little bit, because it's important to have the decision, the notices of decision issued as close to the vote, so that people aren't, it just doesn't drag out. So the town planner, over, over any site plans, tries to draft the decision documents, get them to Town Council for review, and have them signed as soon as possible after the vote. It's just good business. So, and because eight days ago, the indication would be that there may be an appeal, it was important to get the, get the information, get it resolved quickly. So I can tell you that, you know, at the last meeting, we, we didn't want to have to meet again. But we did. Here we are tonight. And we want to get the, you know, the notices of decision to the town clerk and have them out for the appeal period.
Oh yeah, I wasn't trying to imply it was like late or last minute, it's just that we all got it at the same time. That's all I was saying, pretty much. So, thank you.
Timlet with, wrote, "Just a word in defense of the town clerk. I get electronic notices, and you can sign up for them on the website. The notice for this came out at just about 10 minutes after the timestamp here electronically, and that means the document was actually posted on the website. I do take the point that, you know, perhaps the town planner or someone might have wanted to reach out, but people who want information, it is electronically available and it is delivered in a timely fashion to everyone."
Hi. Jermaine Valentine, Six Newton Street, Southborough. I just want to clarify the application. Was the application, was it just a standard application, or did it actually say a special permit application? Which from my understanding, that's what was required because it was a Village Business District?
It's two applications.
There were two applications were made?
Two applications, and that's why there were two votes.
Okay.
First application is for site plan approval. Site plan is throughout the town. In the Village Business Districts, you need to have a second application for the special permit. And that's what we're trying to clear up here tonight, is that according to Town Council, in the Village Business District, there's a separate application for site plan. That only has to have a majority vote, three to, three out of five. The special permit is also required. So there's, there's two applications. One, site plan, one for the special permit. Special permit requires four out of five. Two applications.
Okay. And so one application, the first one, the standard application, the vote was three to two? And then the special permit application, the vote was also three to two? But the second special permit application required four? Four, okay, I just want to clarify, make sure I understand.
You got it.
Thank you.
Exactly. We have to, the, the room is going to be another meeting in a few minutes. If there's nothing else...
So will we get further clarification?
We can put it on a future agenda to, you know, keep the discussion going relative to the, the language that's in the code. And either people that disagree with Town Council can be, receive some training or additional, I guess, clarification. And if there's still no agreement, then it may, maybe appear that it's better to change the language in the code.
So the decision for special permit says, "Special permit, Village Business District Plan Review." What's the plan if it's not a site plan?
Suggest that we put together our questions and put it on a future agenda and try to get clarity, further clarity. But relative to what happened eight days ago, there's the letter from Town Council. The town planner will put this letter on the Planning Board's website probably tomorrow, tomorrow, tomorrow morning. And everyone can see what, what Town Council said, even though I did read it. And if there's nothing else, we're going to go to adjournment. Mr. Mills?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you.